To the final presentation of the Working Group on Civic Engagement's recommendations, at this time, I want to invite the members of the Working Group on Civic Engagement and the advisors to the working group to come join us here at the podium. So it is such an honor to stand here tonight with this impressive, incredible, dedicated group of residents. We first came before the community earlier this year in October when we announced the creation and appointment of the Working Group on Civic Engagement. And the goal then and the charge that we gave them was clear. We wanted them to work together using their diverse experiences and perspectives to bring forward recommendations on how we can make local government work better in the city of Springfield. And the timeline for that presentation that we gave them was by the end of this year. And at that time, I recall somebody stating that that was an ambitious timeline. And I would challenge those individuals who said it was an ambitious timeline to meet the individuals standing behind me because they are an ambitious group of individuals who have laid out an ambitious set of recommendations. As the president of the city council, I want to ensure that the work that we do in this chamber supports as many residents and businesses as possible and that every constituent in the city of Springfield can have a voice in their local government. That is why one of my first initiatives as president was to appoint the Working Group on Civic Engagement, and I have to say that they have risen to the occasion. They will deliver tonight concrete recommendations to make local government work better. And before we go further, I want to start just by saying thank you to every single one of the members for showing up, for giving it your all, and for coming forward with such a great set of priorities. This working group was led by our newest member of the city council, Ward Five City Councilor LeVar Click Bruce. I'm going to turn the podium over to him to give an overview of the recommendations. We're then going to hear from some members of the working group relative to the specifics on those recommendations and the next steps. We'll allow an opportunity for any working group member that did not present a specific portion to share any thoughts that they would like to about the experience, and we will take questions following that. And I also want to acknowledge and thank the vice president of the city council, my dear friend Melvin Edwards from Ward Three. And Melvin, you want to join us up here? You're sort of standing off to the side over there. It's very unlike you. And so we'd like to invite you over. And I do just want to share with everybody, we are broadcasting live on Focus Springfield this evening, and this will be recorded and available to the public and other members of the council following tonight. So with that, I'll turn the floor to my colleague, Ward Five City Councilor LeVar Click Bruce.
All right. Thank you, council president. And then echoing what council president just said, I'm just elated and honored to be for such a great, great group. And we're going to keep in touch because I'm actually going to be leaning on all of them to help assist these initiatives through. So we came together on the recommendation of council president, and I just want to tell you, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your encouragement along the way, and thank you for your guidance because you were there at every meeting. And he kept asking me, do you want me to come? Yes, I do. I want you to come and be a part and see this vision through. And again, I want to express my thanks to the working group because it's a dynamic group, very diverse, very, very perfect. And I know people don't like to use that word, but they were actually great to work with, and that's what local government is about. And we know nobody's perfect, but this group, when we came together, we created perfection. And again, we wanted to get feedback from our constituents, which is this working group, and this is why the working group was created. It is very important to see what they were thinking in terms of making the city of Springfield a better place to reside. This Working Group on Civic Engagement is simply amazing. I want to keep saying that. And I believe we came up with some great recommendations to present to the city council as a whole. Now, we created eight recommendations, and I'll go through all eight recommendations, and then we'll call up those individuals to speak to each one. The first one, we create a layman's cover sheet for legislative proposals. Two, implement text and email alerts for public meetings. Three, launch online public speak out and committee meeting registration. Four, adopt early and mail-in voting in local elections. Five, hold monthly local government briefings. Six, access and expand 311 call center operations. Seven, expand opportunities for youth participation and education. And last but not least, eighth, expand focus efforts to actively support our senior citizens. So first, the layman's cover sheet will be Erica.
Thank you. I'm Erica Swallow. This is recommendation one, introduce a layman's cover sheet for ordinance proposals. The working group's first recommendation is that the Springfield City Council adopt the practice of including a layman's cover sheet with all new ordinance proposals and amendments. The cover sheet should include a plain language description of the effect of the legislation. This practice will make it easier for the general public to understand the intent of new ordinances and ordinance amendments and engage with their representation regarding such proposals. So each one of these recommendations tonight that we'll make will discuss the problem, the solution, measuring impact, and next steps. And this is an example of how such a cover sheet could look. So the problem, legislative language can be inaccessible or confusing, making engagement with local legislative proposals difficult for members of the public. The solution, the layman's cover sheet would break down legislative proposals in plain accessible language and clearly detailed the intent of councilors' actions in introducing new legislation, making it easier for members of the public to provide feedback. Measuring impact, this recommendation's impact can be measured by adoption of a new city council rule requiring a layman's cover sheet to accompany legislative proposals on the public agenda. Next steps, city councilors introduce and adopt the rule change.
Thank you, Erica. And I'm from a school of church, so we like to think ahead. So what we're going to do is I'm going to go through all the, so be in the queue per se. So up next, we have Dr. Cottle. Then after Dr. Cottle, we'll have Jada. Then after Jada, we're going to have Steve, Manny, Lizzie, Lisa, Jasper, and then Mother Mabel. Please just govern yourselves accordingly. If you need to, just tap me and I'll keep your order, okay? Thank you.
Dr. Cottle.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patrice Cottle, and I will be going over recommendation number two, and that is to implement text and email alerts for public meetings. So the working group's second recommendation is that the city of Springfield adopt technology to allow members of the public to sign up for text and email alerts when public meetings are scheduled. This should include alerts for the city council, the school committee, subcommittees, and municipal boards and commissions. The service should also be offered free of charge to neighborhood councils and civic associations. So the problem that we noticed was that municipal meeting times and agendas can be difficult to access and keep track of for the general public. The solution we came up with was the city of Springfield should adopt an opt-in public alert system to allow residents to sign up to receive notifications and agendas to make such information more accessible. We're going to measure impact by assessing the number of signups the future public alert system receives on an annual basis by the adoption rate of neighborhood councils and civic associations and pre and post alert system attendance counts at government meetings, which can be compared after one year of service. The next steps, the Springfield City Council and the city clerk's office will work with the finance department, IT, and procurement to identify the best and most cost-effective technology to implement the alert system and engage local media and community organizations to drive signups.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jada. I will be discussing recommendation three, which is to launch an online public speak out, sign up page, and online committee meeting registration. The working group's third recommendation is that the Springfield City Council launch an online portal to allow the public to sign up for the public speak out opportunities and to attend virtual meetings and to subcommittees. An online sign up option should also exist for the other public bodies in the city of Springfield to make it easier for members of the public to engage with their local officials. The problem is that the public speak out policies of the city council and the other public bodies are not widely known, and signing up for a public speak out or virtual participation can be time insensitive for members of the public. The solution for this problem would be to launch an online registration page for public speak out and virtual committee meetings, allowing for those to sign up for policies to be centrally located and make it more convenient for members of the public to initiate engagement. Measuring impact, the impact of this recommendation can be measured by evaluating the number of individuals participating in public speak outs on an annual basis, as well as the number of individuals participating in the city council's subcommittee meetings and meetings of other public bodies in the city. The next steps for this would be for the Springfield City Council works with the clerk's office and IT department to build out and launch the online setup. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kareem Kibody, and I'll be introducing recommendation number four. The working group's fourth recommendation is that the city of Springfield shall adopt early mail-in voting options in all elections. Existing data shows a significant number of Springfield voters are already utilizing early and mail-in voting options when it is offered in statewide elections. And expanding this to local elections will create consistency in voting mediums across election cycles and break down barriers that can exist to participation of all voters. This is especially important for our senior citizens, individuals facing physical disabilities, parents, and those with alternative working schedules. The solution that we have is to adopt early mail-in voting in all local election breakdowns to break down barriers to participation and create consistency between our local, state, and federal election practices. The way that we'll measure impact for this is by measuring the voter turnout in all future cycles, especially for the successful adoption in the 2023 municipal election and all future municipal elections. The next steps, two Springfield election commissioners must recommend adoption, and the Springfield City Council must both vote to implement early mail-in voting in the 2023 municipal election. Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, fellow citizens of Springfield and family. We're here because we care. We all care. And I'm here to read off recommendation number five, hold monthly local government briefings to inform the community. The working group's fifth recommendation is that the city of Springfield host a monthly briefing, bringing together the city council, the mayor's office, and the school committee to update the community on their work. The briefing should be publicized in advance and streamed live on Focus Springfield, the social media platforms, and include a call-in conference number for the benefit of those without access to cable or internet, especially senior citizens. The problem, residents expressed a clear need to hear more regular updates from local elected officials, including what initiatives and issues they are working on in an accessible manner. The solution, the city council conveys a monthly briefing open to all councilors, as well as the mayor and the school committee, to present on issues and initiatives of public interest. The briefing is streamed live on Focus Springfield, social media, and includes a call-in conference number. The briefing is recorded and made available for the viewing after. Measuring this impact, this recommendation impact can be measured by the body's adoption of the recommendation and engagement via online platforms. The next step is city council president conveys monthly briefings in 2023. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lizzie Gaddy-Ehrlich of Forest Park, and I'm here to talk about recommendation six, which is about 311. Our sixth recommendation is that the city of Springfield undertake an assessment of the 311 call center with the goal of ultimately expanding services available to residents through the center, improving two-way communication and outcomes between city departments and residents who contact the center, and exploring best practices for municipal call centers and other communities across the United States that we could implement locally. So the problem is that while 311 is widely recognized by the community, more capacity is desired from residents. They want two-way communication from city departments and closer tracking of service request outcomes. This is especially critical for the city's senior population, many of whom rely on their phones for their main source of accessing information. So the solution we came up with is that it's really time for an assessment. So working together actively with the city clerk, 311 director, and 311 staff, the city council, and the director of internal audit should conduct a deep dive into 311 call center practices nationwide with the goal of expanding and improving our own operations to include two-way communications, service request tracking and follow-up, and interfacing of the call center with municipal departments. How will we measure impact? Can be measured by final results of the audit and in future by call center utilization and resident satisfaction surveys to see how well the improvements did. Next steps, Springfield City Council will work with the city clerk and director of 311 to request an internal audit.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Bukowski, and along with fellow committee member Jasper McCoy, we will be presenting recommendation number seven, to expand opportunities for youth participation and education. The working group's seventh recommendation is for the city of Springfield to deeply commit to expanding opportunities for youth participation in local government and foster educational opportunities to promote civic engagement in the lives of youth. The working group acknowledges the magnitude and multifaceted nature of this particular recommendation and as such admits there is no one solution, instead submitting a series of recommendations to serve as a starting point for our local government to demonstrate a commitment to addressing youth engagement. We stated the problem as local government can be inaccessible to young people, leading to disenfranchisement and lack of understanding of local government systems and resources.
So some of the solutions or recommendations we have, number one is establish a paid internship program or programs in municipal departments to create opportunities for local high school and college students to experience different parts of municipal government, starting with the city council and clerk's office. Two, working with existing neighborhood councils and civic associations to establish youth representative seats on their board of directors for those that do not already have one. Develop a counselor-for-a-day initiative in which students carry out the role of a city councilor at their school for a day and later attend a city council meeting. Four, work with the city's poet laureate to develop an art-based civic engagement training at city hall with a curriculum based on the role that poetry and the arts can have and have played in civic engagement throughout history, and appoint the youth poet laureate. Five, restore the kids' vote to curriculum that allows students to accompany their parents on election day and vote in a mock election alongside a comprehensive K-12 curriculum focusing on local government and featuring the opportunity for students to hold binding votes on matters of importance in their schools, including but not limited to matters regarding monetary incentives. And finally, six, create intergenerational initiatives to engage senior residents and youth together to promote the sharing of historical knowledge and experiences. And now we'll move into measuring impact.
The impact of these recommendations can be measured by the adoption of each aspect, as well as over time by the percentage of voters under 25 in local, state, and federal elections. Our next steps, city council works toward adoption of the recommendations via a youth ad hoc committee.
Good evening. It's been a pleasure to serve on this committee. My name is Maybelene Sharif. I will be speaking on the recommendation number eight, to expand focus efforts to actively support and include senior citizens. The working group's eighth and final recommendation is to expand focus efforts to actively support and include senior citizens in the work of local government. Senior citizens who are engaged in their community benefit from a larger sense of belonging and being appreciated by society. When senior citizens connect with those who are passionate about the same things they are, it forms lasting bonds and confidence. Evidence indicate that people who are engaged in their communities are more likely to share their knowledge with others, thereby passing the torch to the younger generation and future leaders. Problems, the problems that we found in gathering information in the working group heard from seniors that some of the greatest challenges included physical disability, transportation, medication, mental health, and feeling invisible and unappreciated. The solution, promote ways to actively include senior citizens in decisions about their lives, especially those facing physical and mental disabilities. Measuring impact, showing greater respect, acknowledging and putting to use the talent and skills of senior citizens, creating intergenerational initiative, and allowing older adults to stay active and independent for as long as possible. Next step, Springfield City Council works with the Commission of Health and Human Service, the director of elderly affairs, and the city council's elderly affairs committee to commission a report assessing individuals, the barriers to seniors' engagement, develop holistic, community-based solution inclusive of input directly from senior residents. Thank you.
Thank you to all of the members who presented the recommendations. Before we move to the next portion, we would like to welcome any members of the working group or advisors who participated to share any additional thoughts that they have about the process. And at this time, that would be open to anybody else who would like to speak this evening. Magdalena.
I want to say how grateful I am to have been invited to be part of this and to hear when Ms. Mabel was speaking about the sharing of intergenerational knowledge that is so important. And as we talk about civic engagement, a country, a city, a community are measured by the way they treat their young people and by the way they treat their elders. And so those initiatives of intergenerational connection is very important to me, and specifically the program that I would like to do would take place here in city hall, where young people would know that this is their home. And we can also integrate elder writers, authors, and artists to also come together at that table and then hold speak out, not speak outs, I got that word from someone else, but it is a good word. But speak out is more this, and I'm talking a little bit more about this. So it would be a time when young people could come and look at the issues that are of concern to them and create poetry around it, learn a little bit about the history of poetry in social justice movements throughout history, starting 5,000 years ago with the original public poet in Heduana, Sumerian princess in Mesopotamia, now known as Iraq. So it's not a new idea, and it's my hope and my vision that city hall can really feel like the house of the people and that it can start with the youth and the elders. So thank you all. I'm so grateful for the opportunity and to all the beautiful people that I have had the opportunity to be with, if only for a short time. They all worked a lot harder than I did because I was not available, and I want to own that. But I just want to say that this is a magnificent group, and I'd like to give them my love.
My name is Ron Davis, and I just wanted to say that I'm impressed what I became by listening to my colleagues, and it also made me realize that I still have a long way to go. Thank you.
I just wanted to echo some of what we've already heard, but to thank everybody for councilors for pulling us together and for everybody to do the hard work. And I'm going to say kind of the same thing I did at the start of this, is that when people hear civic engagement, they think it's this huge, heavy lift, and it certainly can be, but mostly it's just showing up. It's doing what everybody did here and adding your thoughts and being a good listener. So for anybody who looks at this and thinks like, oh, you know, as Magdalena said, that this is a house for everybody, no matter your age, no matter where you come from, no matter who you are, and that it's so important to realize that showing up can allow you to be civically engaged, and it is that simple. So thank you, and thank you, everybody.
And so with that, we also want to thank Ward Seven City Councilor Tim Allen for being here this evening. We appreciate you. And as you can see, the recommendations that have been rolled out by the working group, they range from the very specific to some that are a little bit more broad. They range from technical to artistic. We really thought it was important to bring forward a comprehensive report, and that is exactly what we have. And so once again, on behalf of the city of Springfield, the Springfield City Council, I want to say thank you to all of the working group members and advisors, as well as members of the council who supported the initiative. We're looking forward to a productive 2023 that will include implementing what was described here this evening. And if we'll indulge us just a moment longer, Councilor Click Bruce and I do have a token of our appreciation for each member of the working group, and I'd invite Councilor Allen and Councilor Edwards to join us here at the podium. And so each member of the working group will be presented tonight with a city council citation sponsored by myself and Councilor Click Bruce. And they all read the same thing. I'll let Councilor Click Bruce read the citations, and then we can hand them out to each member.
All right. So they all read the same, "The city of Springfield City Council in recognition, the Springfield City Council hereby honors, commends, and thanks Jada Francis Fisher." And they're all going to read each individual's name for their service to the city of Springfield as a member of the city council's Working Group on Civic Engagement and for their contributions to bring forth legislative policy and operational recommendations to improve the work of local government. December 20, 2022, signed by our city clerk, the great Gladys Oyola Lopez, First Latina, I might add. And this was sponsored by the city council president, Council President Jesse Letterman, Ward Five City Councilor LeVar Click Bruce. First one is Jada.
We have Juan Falcone.
Thank you, Juan.
Erica Swallow.
And Erica, you did an amazing job on putting stuff together for us. I thank you for your hard work.
Yes. Through this process, we learned that Erica's a former editor and also put the template together for us, and much of the editing and design was Erica. And the next proclamation is for Lisa Wilson Bukowski.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And Dr. Patrice Cottle. Thank you. Magdalena Gomez, the poet laureate of the city of Springfield.
I want a hug. Thank you.
And Ms. Brenda Evans. Elizabeth Payne Geddy. We're into the hugging stage. We spent a lot of hours together, all of them. Jasper McCoy.
Look at Jasper looking all dapper. He all dippy today. He's like, I'm going to show up and show out today.
He did offer to switch with me when we came in, but I didn't think it was going to work out. We know that Aralise Barbosa wanted to be with us tonight. We will deliver this proclamation to her. But she was a wonderful member of the working group. Let's hear it for Aralise. Our pastor, Guma Sindo Manny Gomez.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate you.
Kept us awake. And the one and only Maybelene Sharif.
She kept us in line.
Mr. Ron Davis. Mr. Frank Ryan wanted to be with us. He is civically engaged this evening at a meeting of the East Forest Park Civic Association, but we will make sure that he gets his proclamation as well. Kareem Kibodia. Our city clerk, Gladys Oyola Lopez. We all spend so much time together. And last, but certainly not least, the executive director of Focus Springfield, Stephen Carey. LeVar, you want to close us out?
All right. So again, we thank you to each of the working group. This has been a tremendous opportunity for myself, kind of getting my feet wet. I'm working on a council. Again, I thank you, Council President, for your leadership. I thank you to my colleagues for being here. And please have a safe and happy holidays and spend time with your families. And again, this is what, this is what politics should be about, really bringing some concrete, tangible items that we can present and get accomplished and make sure we're moving forward and moving the city forward, working together as a collective unit and a body. And this is what this group embodies. So I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'm grateful to be a part of it. It means, it means the world to me. And if I, if I, if I don't get this chance again ever in life, I want to say thank you, and God bless you all. Have a good night.